I will follow the order. Meeting of the Wilsonville City Council, regular session on Monday, December 20th at 7:15 PM. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Linville?
She looks frozen.
Are you all having, is the audio working?
I think.
I can hear you fine, Mayor.
Counselor Linville's screen.
I didn't hear the roll call, I wondered about that.
Can you hear us, Mayor?
Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor West?
Here.
Counselor Lehan?
Here.
Council President Ocravol?
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Here.
And I believe Counselor Linville will be joining us shortly. We're having some Zoom issues, I believe.
Um, I'm sorry, can we check and see if she is in the, if we have a connection problem there?
I think we do have a connection problem, Mayor, because her screen was frozen. So I think she might have been kicked out. But I will, I'll text her right now.
Hello? Still frozen. Ah, now she's unfrozen.
There she is.
She's here, I see her.
I see her.
There you are. I'm sorry, Counselor Linville, our technical system keeps doing that to you. So, thank you, and we're, we'll continue with the roll call.
Counselor Linville?
Here. Thank you, will the city manager please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for which it stands, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I, we, before I ask for a motion to approve the follow, the order of agenda, I just want to remind the council that we had discussed removing one item from the consent agenda. And would Council President Ocravol like to make a motion to approve the agenda with that in mind, please?
Yes, I move to approve the order of agenda with the modification that, I'm going to find the resolution number here, one second.
2937.
Thank you, with resolution number 2937, be removed from consent agenda and added as, let's see, I believe it would be new business.
Yes.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended as subscribed by Council President Lehan. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. And that brings me to Mayor's business. I wanted to let everyone know that, or our community know, and the other councilors, that on our website, city website, you can see there is a brief survey posted there. There's a link to a survey that we'd like people to take, and the object of it is to learn what the residents in Wilsonville are doing to prepare for emergencies. And the responses that we receive from the residents will inform a community awareness campaign that is being developed to improve our community's preparedness for emergencies. And this relates to one of our council goals. So I just wanted to highlight that that is on the website for people to look, look at and take the survey. Some of the items that have been happening since, that I've been working on since our last meeting, you may have read in the news that two weeks ago, the Oregon Supreme Court upheld a ruling by the Court of Appeals in a case brought by the cities of Aurora and Wilsonville. The court found that the Oregon Department of Aviation violated the state's land use system when approving a 2011 to 12 Aurora State Airport master plan with a longer runway. Now, the Department of Aviation is undertaking a new federally funded master planning process for the Aurora State Airport. And as we discussed at our last council meeting, unfortunately, that master planning process has gotten off to a rocky start with some of the comments from some of the people who are wanting to participate. The city of Aurora, Mayor Brian Asher, and I collaborated on writing a letter to Governor Brown regarding that. And we're seeking her intervention with the Department of Aviation to ensure a fair, valid planning process with meaningful public engagement. As the mayors of the Aurora State Airport area communities, we listed a number of significant public concerns, and I'll just note some of them. One was the Department of Aviation's predisposition favoring airport runway extension that enables increased sales of leaded aviation fuel gas and is directly contrary to the governor's executive order on climate action. A master plan advisory committee is stacked with a majority of interests that are financially benefiting by taxpayer-funded airport expansion. There's an exclusion of key state agencies from the process, namely the Department of Agriculture and Department of Environmental Quality. Those two work respectively with our local area farms, and they protect public health and the environment. It's really been a, what, what we have seen, and some of the other participants, has a relatively, what looks like a biased airport master planning process that fails to provide meaningful community engagement. And there has been a promotion of what we see as false information about the seismic resilience of the Aurora State Airport, which is listed at the lowest level of the Tier 3 airports in the Oregon Resilience Plan. And it's located in an area subject to major potential damage in a projected 9.0 Cascadia Sejection Zone earthquake. So we look forward to the governor's assistance to improve this public process as this new master plan proceeds. Just last week, we had a nice gathering in Wilsonville at Town Center, celebrating, it was actually a ribbon cutting of the Oregon Army National Guard ribbon cutting. They have opened a recruiting center in Wilsonville, and it was hosted by Captain Ian Beatty, who is in charge of Army National Guard recruiting for our area, and there are quite a number of National Guardsmen there. Also, Chamber of Commerce President Jamie Beltran and CEO of the Chamber, Kevin O'Malley was there, and a number of other people. We met some veterans and celebrated the number of people in our community that are in the National Guard, including high school students. One, one in particular that I happen to know is an example of the kinds of opportunities that Captain Beatty described, which are great opportunities for learning, college scholarships, and leadership potential in a number of fields. So I'd like to, you know, we thanked, you know, everybody in the, in the gathering, really thanked all of the veterans. It was a great event. Also wanted to just recognize, as I'm bringing this up, that our city manager is a veteran, and our assistant city manager, Brian Adams, is in the guard. So thank you to all the soldiers of the Oregon Army National Guard who are called up on their day-to-day jobs, serving our community and the world. And I encourage you to stop into that recruiting station. It's down at the end of Town Center, toward Goodwill. And you can learn a lot about all of the opportunities they have there. There have been a number of Washington County meetings I went to, including one today, where we had a presentation by the top epidemiologist for Washington County, just answering questions from mayors about the Omicron variant. And, and that was a good resource. And I'm sure that our city and Clackamas County and Washington County are both resources there for the public health with regard to how to manage that, that variant, so that we can get out of this pandemic once and for all. And it is, it is said to be a very challenging time for our healthcare workers in the coming weeks. The, also had, with Washington County, there was a 25,000 opportunity request made by the Westside Transportation Alliance to leverage a $75,000 Metro Regional Travel Options Grant. So that was announced for all those communities. I'm going to kind of scan through this, many different meetings about transportation, planning. Washington County does happen to have a specific funding mechanism that they've had for many years, which gives them some new projects to work on that you'll be hearing more about. Also attended a Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium meeting, where we elected officers for next year and developed draft 2022 legislative priorities. So those are the main highlights that I've been doing the last couple of years, a couple of weeks. And I will hear from the other councilors and the activities they've been doing on behalf of our city coming up soon. And I hope that everybody has a wonderful holiday and time to visit with your family. Our next city council meeting is going to be Thursday, January 20th, in recognition of Martin Luther King Day. And Martin Luther King Day is celebrated on Monday, January 17. So we, we will not have a meeting at the, at the beginning of January. Our next meeting again is Thursday, January 20th. So we have two more items under Mayor's Business to cover, and then we'll go to Communications. The next one is the appointments and reappointments for the boards and commissions. And we have a, again, we had a lot of applications this time and several months ago. And I just wanted everybody to know that it's really hard to look at all these, I mean, it's just, it's wonderful to interview all the people, and we just can't seat them all. So we, we do keep applications for a year, and I have gone back and looked at people who have applied and tried to look at where they can fit in. Right now, we have six openings, and there will be more openings going forward as terms expire. But at this point, I would like to ask Council President Ocravol to read the motion for the appointments. All of the councilors have been sent all of the applications. And at this point, you'll be hearing in the motion my recommendations for these current openings today, and asking for the council to ratify those recommendations.
Sure. So first, I move to ratify the appointment of Sam Skoll and Alicia Molten to the Budget Committee for a term beginning January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2024.
Second that, Your Honor.
All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
And would you like me to move through?
Yes, that would be wonderful.
Okay, here I go. So I move to ratify the reappointment of Nicole Hendricks to the Development Review Board Panel B for a term beginning January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2023.
Okay. All, motions to move and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. Go to the next one, please.
I move to ratify the appointment of John Andrews to the Development Review Board Panel B for a term beginning January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2023.
There are seconds.
Second.
Motion to move and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the reappointment of Erin Reyna and Kevin Stewart to the Kiddekada Sister City Advisory Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2024.
I'll second.
If the motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
I move to ratify the appointment of Samuel Scarpone to the Kiddekada Sister City Advisory Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2024.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion to move and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 I move to ratify the appointment of John Steve Worts to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to move and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
And I move to ratify the reappointment of Ronald Heberlein to the Planning Commission for a term beginning January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2025.
There are seconds.
I'll second that.
Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0.
And finally, I move to ratify the appointment of Andrew Carr to the Planning Commission for a term beginning January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Council President Ocravol.
Your Honor.
And that brings us to the municipal court judge employment agreement. And I believe we have a staff report, Mr. Cosgrove.
Mayor, before we get to that, I think the city recorder has one additional appointment.
Your Honor, it looks like we need the motion for the appointment for the DRV, excuse me, the Development Review Board Panel A for Catherine Neal.
Oh.
I apologize.
There was a big mistake.
That one, it was unintentional, of course.
Thank you, thank you for catching that.
Thank you. I move to ratify the reappointment of Catherine Neal to the Development Review Board Panel A for a term beginning January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2023.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion to move and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 I don't really know why we have so many right now, but we did. And, and we wish we had a lot more. So I really want to thank everybody who's applied. We have such good volunteer support for our city. So I will now move to the municipal court judge employment agreement. And do we have a staff report?
I think Mr. Catco can give you a brief summary. It's just a, an extension of an existing contract.
It's a two-year extension, there's no changes to the contract. So it's just a two-year renewal for Judge Fred Winehouse.
Thank you, councilors. You've all been provided with two-year extension for the contract for our municipal court judge. And I would like to ask for a motion to approve this. Counselor West?
Your Honor, I move to approve the two-year contract extension for our municipal court judge employment agreement. Do I need to do dates?
Yes.
From, is it start January, what's the date?
It's, it's, it's on the agenda item. It's January 7th, 2022 to January.
January 7th, 2022 to?
January 7th, 2024.
January 7th, 2024. Okay, yeah, that's my motion.
Do I have, I would like to, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. That brings us to our communications section, and we have a presentation by two of our staff members regarding the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee and their mission and vision they've been developing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Zoe Monburt. I am the Assistant City Manager. And with me this evening is Imran Hyder. He is the Chair of our DEI committee.
Zoe, do you have a microphone?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I apologize, I tried to switch to avoid technical difficulties and am still learning, so bear with me. Again, I'm Zoe Monburt, I am the Assistant to the City Manager. And with me this evening is Imran Hyder. He is our Chair of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Possibly. As you'll recall, the committee was established and stood up in July of 2021. The 13-member committee has met every month since they were established. Together, the committee has been working to take steps to learn more about each other, public meeting law, and Roberts Rule of Order. They also selected the Chair, Imran Hyder, and the Vice Chair, Jay Edwards. The Parks, Planning, Library, and Communications Teams have met with the committee to give the committee a foundation for the city's current programs and projects. After much discussion, the committee has developed their mission and vision. And I'd like to turn it over to Imran at this time in order to share the vision with you.
All right, thanks, Zoe. Yeah, basically before, I guess I'll read it, and then we'll talk through a little bit about how we came up with this and elaborate a little bit. And for anyone who's not able to read the screen right now or just listening in, I'll actually read it word for word so everybody can hear it. So the vision statement that we came up with was, is, rather, "The Wilsonville Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee is a beacon of connectivity, empowered to take thoughtful action to ensure sustained community collaboration, to foster a climate of inclusion and belonging for all residents and and visitors to Wilsonville." And then our mission statement, which follows this. "The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee serves to connect Wilsonville to the diverse perspectives and lived experiences of its people. We advocate for equitable access and opportunity for every community member. We identify barriers to participation and inclusion and pursue programs, policies, partnerships, and ideas that remove those barriers." So, yeah, I mean, obviously, listening to this for the first time, seeing this for the first time, if you're not and haven't been attending our meetings, I guess to elaborate on what, what we're trying to do in a nutshell is, and there's actually a member of our 13-member committee that, you know, they travel around the city in, in a wheelchair, and they are, they have made it very clear that not all of Wilsonville is accessible. And the reason why I use this as an example is because reading through the vision and the mission or thinking about those things I just said, I think that's a, just a really, really accurate example of why a DEI committee should exist. And what we kind of want to do with a mission like this is figure out how a person like that can shop, where they need to shop, go to a park and enjoy a nice day, or go to a place of worship, you know, private business, public business, whatever it is. If it's in the city of Wilsonville, we, we want to take and diminish or remove barriers that, and we want to create more access for everybody who wants to be involved with everything the city does. So that's just an example of somebody that's on, in our committee that has had a lot of dialogues with us about it. And I don't think it becomes a reality for people until you're actually, like, I would implore any of you to just, you know, go into a set of wheels, a wheelchair, something for a day or two, and see what it's like to, where can you go? How, how do you get there? And when you get in the parking lot, how bumpy is it? How hard is it for you to get from point A to point B? And so that's just an example that I like to throw out there. Because also, I think from an outsider perspective, the last thing I'll say is, people hear DEI and all kinds of different associations come into their head that may not be accurate. DEI work, to me, is creating more, a more accessible world for everybody, and it's not taken away from anybody. So I think just the one other thing that I want to clear up that's kind of reading between the lines is, we're not trying to take away anything from anything that, anyone that already exists. We're trying to make this city and our community a better place for all people to feel like they belong here, no matter what religion you practice, no matter what ethnicity you are, no matter what your age is, no matter what your physical ability or disability, and no matter your socioeconomic background.
Wonderful, thank you.
And Zoe, I don't know if there's, is there another slide?
Yes, just one more.
Or is that it?
Thank you, Imran.
Okay.
So with that, the committee will move on now that they have their mission and vision, which, as Imran mentioned, took a lot of thought. There were a lot of elements that they wanted to make sure that were included in that. And from here, they'll move forward to develop a strategy. And that strategy will guide their work moving forward. And we hope to come back to you in 2022 with that strategy for your adoption. So this evening, we're just here to give you an update on the great work that the committee has been doing, answer any questions that you have, and then give you the update that we will be back to continue to help meet that council value of being, being committed to promoting DEI in the delivery of city services to the community and in our, excuse me, organizational operations. And with that, Imran and I would be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Imran. That was a great presentation. I appreciate the different angles and dimensions that you're bringing into the conversation. And I see we have some comments. I'll start with Council President Ocravol.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment, you know, it was explained that the committee has met every month since its formation. And I remember when we set up the committee, it was not required that there were monthly meetings. But I think this really speaks to the excellent work that the, the committee members are putting in and also the needs that we have within the city. So thank you so much for doing that work, and I look forward to seeing what will come further in the future.
Yeah, thank you. I hope they're listening and they can hear that, otherwise I would definitely relay the message.
Please do.
Okay, Counselor West?
All right, I'm you myself. Imran, great job, great presentation. I, one thing that I just liked, my takeaway from the presentation was equality of opportunity. And I just think that that is a really great value system that you're using to kind of set your vision with. I couldn't think of something, I mean, I think you're spot on. I think you hit the bullseye with that. And I'm really proud of you guys. And I'm going to echo Council President Ocravol. You guys have been doing the work, right? Like, and we are relying on you guys to do that and stepping up. And I know that we're all busy and life is crazy, and we've had a pandemic, and we've had everything, and it's been a lot going on. But you guys have really stepped up and done the work. And the value, the way you articulated the value system around this, I think is spot on, and I'm really proud of you guys. So thank you, I know we all appreciate it. And we look forward to seeing what your next presentation is going to be like.
Thanks, Counselor West. That means a lot. Yeah, the thing I'll, I'll just elaborate off of what Ben or Counselor West said is just, we, I think we need to clearly communicate as a city and all be together on, DEI work is really not about a political statement. It's about people that live in the neighborhoods in Wilsonville and own businesses here. And so I think where people really, really get off track is they think that DEI is like a code acronym for a political statement. It's not, it's, it is seriously like, what, like I said, it's the, it's getting a ramp installed so that somebody can visit a restaurant here that, that's in a wheelchair. So, so yeah, I echo what you said. And it's, it's just really nice to have feedback from people since we've, yeah, we've met six times and we still have more to do, and we're excited.
Thank you, Counselor Linville. Thank you. I just wanted to forward my congratulations to the committee. I know that hammering out a values and mission statement is not, it's not an easy task. And I, I know there are really some wonderful members on the committee. And to do that in six meetings is pretty amazing, given the complexity of the work that this committee is going to do on behalf of our city. So I want, I wondered if you would forward my congratulations to the committee members as well. And I, I know, when, when I think about going back to the conversations that that the council has had about the need for these issues to be brought to the forefront in our community, both for residents and for visitors, I am just so delighted that the city has moved forward and that we have really strong representation on the committee to bring all of those different perspectives to the work. So congratulations, and, you know, I look forward to the work that you're going to do in the future. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the last thing I'll say in response to all of your comments is, and I don't want you all to get inflated egos, but I think it's, it really is, I want to give props to the council and to Mayor Fitzgerald, because not every, a lot of cities have said things that they want to do in this direction, but like, Wilsonville has actually done it, and it's impressive. And I already thanked Brian and some of our city staff as well. But, I mean, it's really awesome to have support, and that's the way you get momentum and you're able to accomplish something. So we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't be, obviously, we wouldn't be here without everybody who's sitting here. So we appreciate that, and we're happy to have interaction with you and feedback from you and visits from anyone who wants to visit anytime.
Well, that's great. I love hearing that, and you're reminding me of, right off the bat, when this committee started, or maybe it was even before they had a chance to have a meeting, it happened to be Juneteenth. And there was just this spirit that came forth, like, let's just do, let's just do something for Juneteenth. That was a really fun day. And I think, I thank you all for doing that. It wasn't, you didn't have any, we didn't have any big decorations, we didn't have a band, we didn't have any kind of pomp and circumstance, but we had a lot of really happy-looking, energetic people, and they want to get together again. It was just cool. And we'll have some hard things to deal with. We're open to those conversations. And I think you've set a structure and a format that we can have those conversations and figure out things that we need to work on over time. So thank you, Imran. Thank you to the entire committee, and thank you, Zo, also for supporting them.
Thank you, Mary Council.
It seems like Juneteenth is a really long way away in this rainy December, but we'll see it again soon. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to our, just a minute, please. I don't want to get it. We have a presentation from our Parks Department on the Memorial Park Nature Play.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and members of council. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Thank you again. My name is Dustin Shul. I'm the Parks Supervisor here in Wilsonville. Joining me tonight is Tommy Reader, and he's a Lead Park Maintenance Specialist here in the city of Wilsonville, and also Zach Morris, who's our Parks Maintenance Specialist here in the city of Wilsonville. And we're here to provide an update for the Memorial Park Nature Play, which was recently completed using funds from the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Program. This is truly a collaborative team effort that was inspired by the community. I wanted to first start out with a quote that really encompasses the team's goal with this nature play project. And that quote's by Fred Rogers, and it really was the foundation for the way that we moved forward with this project. Play is often talked about as if it were a relief from serious learning. But for children, play is serious learning. Play really is the work of childhood. And it was with that quote in their mind that Tommy and Zach and the Parks Team set out to create the nature play area that we now have in Wilsonville. And it was truly a collaborative team effort that brought it forward. The nature play area was called out in the 2015 Memorial Park Master Plan. You can see it on that top picture there, highlighted in area number seven. The team selected a different location just down the trail for improved visibility, safety, and ADA accessibility. It was a very flexible blueprint. They called out a nature-based play loop, incorporating and offering children an alternative play experience. And so that blueprint, framework, really gave us an opportunity to grow it into a unique space. And it had originally outlined a $25,000 budget in that master plan. The budget that we were fortunate enough to be able to implement was largely funded through the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Program. And the team is very grateful to have had that opportunity to steward some of that money for the community. The team truly stretched the budget. Approximately 80% of all of the material was either of no charge or came directly from our park system here in Wilsonville. And the operations funds were used to install a new asphalt parking lot where there was previously a gravel lot, which now has ADA accessibility right into this new amenity here in Wilsonville. And now Tommy and Zach will join, and they will discuss the project and the tremendous work done by the team in the field. Tommy?
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and council members. I am Tommy Reader, Lead Parks Maintenance Specialist. I've been with the city for 14 years. I've also, through the National Recreation and Parks Association, been a Certified Playground Safety Inspector for the last 13 years. Having that experience has increased my passion for playgrounds and play in general. About five years ago, the concept of nature play started growing in the area. We've visited surrounding parks and attended local workshops. Some of the nature plays really were based on nature, but a lot of the playgrounds I saw were traditional playgrounds that used more natural materials. All types of playgrounds provide important developmental skills for children, but my goal for our nature play was for nature to be the main source of play. To achieve this, we did not use any prefabricated equipment. Wilsonville's nature play is truly one of a kind. My vision for children was the environment around them. Crawl on logs, build forts, touch nature, and use their imagination. In order for parents to let their children play freely, we needed to make sure the area was safe and well-defined. We used visual cues to outline the play area. We also placed benches that could have good visual sites of most of the play area. We wanted children to experience playing on their own, but with this nature play, most of the ground, play elements are ground play, which allows parents to play along with their children. Play at every age is very important. Do you want to go to the next slide, please? The process, probably about three years ago, anytime we had some trees that needed removal, we worked with the contractors to have them leave them in the largest sections that we could move safely. We stored these, waiting till we would have the time to build a nature play area. We also were able to store some boulders from another city project that we would have had to pay to remove. One of the positives that came out of this year's ice storm was abundance of woodchips. We worked with the local tree services that were doing work for us, and instead of having them haul them off, we had them dump them in a spot right next to nature play, which saved them time and also saved us money. Most of the materials were sourced locally. Anything we had to purchase were also sourced locally. We worked with a local quarry out of Mollala to get some boulders for a cabin. The beams for the teeter, or for the balance beams were sourced from an architectural salvage out of Aurora. We had, we met with a local carver, James Bukanich, who's out of Otis, Oregon. Speaking with him, we talked about what we were building, what we'd like to see, and he carved three great sculptures that fit the area perfectly. My favorite part of the project was when we'd have challenges with design or construction, we had the ability to adapt and improve on our initial design. Not having set blueprints allowed us to pivot quickly and deliver the best product to the community. Next slide.
Mayor Fitzgerald and the members of City Council, I am Zach Morris, Parks Maintenance Specialist. I've been with the city for a little over five years. I oversee the maintenance at Memorial and Marashi Park. This project took a little over 400 hours with Tommy and I both putting in about 150 hours. And then the rest of our remaining team members filled in when they could. So I have to give them major props. We couldn't have done it without them. This was a total team effort. Most of our time was spent, that top picture you see there on the left was actually clearing the site. There was a ton of blackberries in there. It took a lot of equipment, equipment that we had to rent to clear that area, and also moving all of our products to the job site. We were able to track all this time through our asset management system, Cartograph, where we tracked not only our time, but our equipment costs and also all the materials we bought. This was a big passion project for all of us. A lot of us grew up playing in the woods, and we're happy to see, you know, how it turned out. If you guys haven't been down there, please do check it out. All right, next slide, please.
Tommy? Sure. The results, so we have 12,000 square foot play space. There's five distinct play areas with 11 truly unique play elements. Zach and I will go ahead and talk about the different distinct play areas. Go to the next slide, please. The first two I'll talk about are considered playground equipment, in my perspective, the cabin and the active play area. We designed these to meet the playground standards. The other three distinct play areas are ground play elements and do not have to adhere to playground standards. The cabin is one of those areas that was out of blueprint. We were able to make it better than what I actually envisioned. It was originally supposed to be a cave. After talking with local quarries, we realized we weren't able to get a capstone marge enough to cover what we wanted. With the team, we started to decide what can we turn this into. The idea of a cabin came to mind. I designed the gables, I guess, to meet playground standards so that there's no designated play areas, and if a kid does decide to climb on it, there's no head entrapments or dangers that we have constructed. I envisioned the cabin being used as a space where kids could imagine camping or exploring, watching kids play. We've seen it being a snack area, kids storing their branches and other materials for building. And we've also recently seen a holiday tree put inside. Next slide, please. So the active play area, again, is another one that is considered playground equipment. It's an assortment of stepping paws and balance beams. Again, not having blueprints actually sped up the process. Took about two days to strip the bark and treat the wood for rot, but it only took about a day's worth of work to start placing material. Zach and I and a couple other teammates just started with the excavator, and we kind of just started placing what felt natural and looked good. One of the things we noticed as we were placing them was aesthetically, everything was kind of one height. If you can see in the background, we kind of have some of these taller logs put in. We just decided off a whim to, let's put these in to break up that site alignment and add some interest into the area. If you would like to go onto the next slide, please. The last topic I'll talk about is passive play. So towards the back of the area, we created an area that we thought would be more passive or a quiet area. If you can see the two cedar trees, those will eventually form a kind of entranceway to the area. We use native plants to plant along the edges and create a thin border that would, over time, make it feel a little bit more secluded. We added the table with some stools and a little couch where this might be an area where a kid wants to just get away and relax for a little bit. The thing I think I've liked most about this area is I've seen a lot of artwork come about. When the big leaf maples are dropping their leaves, we saw on the table bright yellow leaves with rocks strewn about, and it seems like this is where kids are kind of putting their mark on the area. Again, with planting, when we kind of started the area, we spread woodchips everywhere. Looking at it, it felt a little too sterile and not enough natural. So we also added native plants throughout the area to kind of bring back nature to the entire area. With that, if you want to go to the next screen, I'll pass it off to Zach.
So our next area is our fort building area. We actually have three different areas that we created where we have stockpiled a whole bunch of limbs. They seem to get built pretty quickly. So our crew is planning to go through every few weeks and disassemble these areas to kind of reset the fort building area so that new park users can come in with their families and begin to build. This is, you know, something that we really wanted to add because we often get calls from people in the community about kids' forts being built out in our natural areas, and we would have to go out and take them down. So this space offers a great alternative to that. And next slide, I will talk about our last, last area. This is our sandbox. With Tommy's vision, we kind of designed it to have a rock riverbed running through it. We wanted to keep it as natural as possible, so you could see the boulders and logs placed in there. This is the canoe in the top right there that Tommy mentioned that our carver from Otis created, along with the sturgeon there on the bottom right. Actually, brought one of these home. We created these wooden pucks to be placed in the sandbox. There we go. Well. To be hidden in the sandbox for kids not only to find and possibly take home, but also to re-hide for other kids. So we created quite a few of those, and we will, yeah, keep hiding them out there for them.
Great. Thank you, Zach and Tommy. The last things we wanted to share with you here are just a few pictures of play. This is really what the project is all about. We had a soft grand opening, some of the rainier pictures. Also a grand opening, and some of the ones where the sun is poking through, and it's very nice. And we even just got some pictures from some appreciative community members who have had the opportunity to take the kids out and play. We've seen a lot of excellent imaginative and collaborative play, which Zach and Tommy both alluded to. And before we move on to questions, just a whole bunch of thank yous. Thank you to the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Committee. Thank you, Mayor Fitzgerald, the members of council, for not only your support of this project, but your support of the Parks and Recreation Team. I thank you to the local businesses and the community members who were able to work with through this process to make this space truly unique and truly one of a kind for Wilsonville. I thank you to the city team. This was a truly cross-functional project. They had public work, and a number of our admin team and City Hall teammates out there as well. And then just a thank you from the bottom of my heart to our Parks Team. And then just a, just a thank you from, from the bottom of my heart to our, our parks team. Uh, Tommy and Zach led the charge. Um, but, but overall, this is a, a huge team lift for our, our Parks Department, um, a really incredible project to be able to bring in-house and, and bring to Wilsonville. So with that, I will, uh, close and, and take any questions or comments you guys have.
Counselor Rex.
So I guess my first question for you, for your group there for Zach and Tommy is, do you guys have fun?
Yeah, so, uh, like I said, I've been here fourteen years. Uh, most days, work is great. I love my job, but this is one of those day, the projects where you actually look forward to coming to work and we're basically playing and building something we would have dreamt of as a kid.
Yeah, Counselor, uh, Lindell and I are on that Metro Enhancement Committee and then of course the council approves all of those projects. This, this was great. Like, I, I mean, I could like see myself as a little boy, just like completely like just having a blast in this type of environment. It was creative. Um, I, I love how you guys had little obstacles along the way and you found really practical solutions to figure it out and to make it so cool for kids. I, it was all the way from like future paleontologists to, to adventurers, to, to cabin, you know, uh, goers. I mean, it was really well done, so I really appreciate the work you guys did. Um, and I could tell you guys were really invested in it and of course, I asked a question and knew the answer to because, uh, obviously you guys had a lot of fun working on it. So thank you for what you guys did for the community.
Yeah, just to follow that up again, Zach and I had fun playing, but again, we both have kids and one of those things is we're excited to bring our kids and let them experience this type of play as well.
Well, it's a great reflection of so many things in Wilsonville. Um, I've, I've been down there a couple times on walks around Memorial Park and just see people delighting and finding it. I know Council President Aquelall was there for the ribbon cutting, I believe. And, um, I think we've, and Council, Counselor Leham was there as well. Um, it, it also, I think helps, I, I hope and imagine that it helps kids and families see the role of recreating in our parks and taking care of and enjoying native plants and everything that kind of ties into a lot of things around Wilsonville. And what it creates, a great way to use your skills and resources to get a playground that is one in, one of a kind. Any other comments, Counselors? All right, well, thank, oh, Council President Aquelall.
You know, um, thank you. You mentioned this in your presentation and thank you very much for your presentation too, but I wanted to, to call this out because, um, you know, having been in this space, the parking lot is a great addition as well, right? But that parking lot wouldn't have been, we wouldn't have been able to do that if you hadn't been able to be so creative and efficient with the resources and, and, um, creating so many of the pieces with materials that we had and, you know, just getting really efficient in all areas of the design and, um, everything like that. So thank you for all that you brought to this because, um, the results were really mul- multiplicative, really in a way, um, with what, what ended up being there. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Aquelall. That was another, uh, another great, great work of this project. We also had, uh, the, the public works team come down and help us strike that in-house so, so, um, cost savings from just having a contractor come in there and do the whole thing as well to, to finish it all. So thank you again.
That's great.
Wonderful. All right, thanks very much. Really appreciate it and we'll see you all on a sunny day at the park.
Thanks, everyone.
So that brings us to citizen input and community announcements. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. It's also the time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff and the city council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizen input before tonight's meeting end or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone wishing to provide input?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm going to start with those that are in the facility because they've been so patient. Um, not that the other ones haven't, but I, I, I see that there are two here. Uh, Susan Schenk will go first.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to take, uh, my two minutes to express my thoughts on the Arts, Culture and Heritage Program. I'm wearing several hats as I share my ideas. I'm a practicing visual artist. I'm a board member of the Clackamas County Arts Alliance, I'm Vice President of the Wilsonville Boones Ferry Historical Society and a Wilsonville citizen and a graduate of the Citizens Academy. But I'm very proud to claim bragging rights that I was the instigator of the Community Enhancement Program grant that set this project in motion back in about two thousand eighteen. No matter what, which of these many hats I'm wearing, I fully endorse the commission idea. I applaud the city's response. I endorse the recommendations and look forward to engaging with the commission. From my many other volunteer positions and my work as an artist, I know how important it is to have a coordinated effort led by a supportive body empowered to make recommendations and to have the government involved full force. So my name is Susan Schenk and my address is one one zero one zero Southwest Maury Court in Wilsonville. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Next we have David Nicholas.
Good evening. My name is David Nicholas. My address is two three six five four Cleppinger Road Northeast, Aurora, Oregon nine seven zero zero two, and I'm addressing you tonight as the president of Wilsonville Stage. As you can tell by my address, I'm not a city resident. My home since nineteen eighty-one has been across the river about five minutes away in unincorporated Marion County, but I've always looked to Wilsonville as my home city. I want to start by lending my voice in support of Resolution two nine four one, the creation of an Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission. In my forty-plus years of observing the city of Wilsonville grow, often exponentially, I have often observed that the city has tended to outgrow its heart, feeling prosperous but seeming to lack a center and a direction. It is my hope that the creation of the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission will be a positive step towards correcting this deficiency. One of my responsibilities in my earlier life was to be a volunteer on a ten-year quest to obtain federal funding within the Agricultural Research Service for my prior industry ornamental horticulture. In that quest, I developed an appreciation for the fiduciary burden that elected officials have to spend taxpayers' money wisely. No one is closer to the elected public that they serve than city officials, and I thank you all for serving. I recognize your duty to spend the citizens' money wisely. Having said that, I feel compelled to remind you of an adage attributed to Benjamin Franklin. Well done is better than well said. The creation of an Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission is a great first step, but it will take a will to spend some taxpayers' money frugally and efficiently to move well said into the greater category of well done. The commission should be only the first step. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Next, and I believe virtually, we have Benjamin Melford.
Go ahead.
We're queuing him up, Mayor.
Hi, I think I'm with you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, sorry for the delay. Uh, for the record, uh, my name is Benjamin Metford. Um, I included my address on the speaker card. I am also here tonight to, uh, offer support for Resolution two nine four one for the creation of the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission. Uh, I, like Susan Schenk, I, I wear many hats as well. Um, I have been a Wilsonville resident for five years. I am a parent. My daughter attends Beckman Elementary. Uh, I work as an on-call cer- circulation clerk at Wilsonville Library and I'm an experienced professional artist and arts administrator. Uh, that experience includes, uh, I'm, as the immediate past president of the Northwest Stone Sculptors Association. Uh, I am the co-chair of the Public Art Committee for the City of Lake Oswego. I am a board member of the Charbonneau Art Association and I am currently the interim executive director of the Wilsonville Arts and Culture Council. Uh, so my support for this, uh, commission is informed by, uh, the, the decade of experience working with these and other cultural organizations. Uh, I think that, uh, Resolution two nine four one is clearly written, it's common sense, and it's a proposal that'll lay the groundwork for the city of Wilsonville to better utilize our really rich cultural resources. Uh, the resolution accurately reflects the work, uh, the hard work of all of us that were participated on the Arts, Culture and Heritage Task Force. Uh, and, uh, the Wilsonville Arts and Culture Council really feels that we have many wonderful opportunities right before us. Uh, we are eager to promote the arts for our city and for our region, and we, we continue to be actively engaged in creating arts programming, uh, in spite of the daunting challenges of the pandemic. In particular, I, I hope that as we all move forward together, that we take into consideration this impressive reputation we have for supporting our students. We, we really have an amazing, um, multi-tiered system for supporting our, our youth in the arts. And the question that I hope you'll consider is, uh, how are we going to give the youth an opportunity to continue their art careers here in Wilsonville after they have left that support system of primary and secondary school? Uh, are they going to have support here within the community to continue, to thrive? Um, or is our creative future going to be drawn away to other cities that offer more, better opportunities? Uh, so Wilsonville Arts and Culture Council looks forward to increased coordination and collaboration with the city of Wilsonville, and we see Resolution two nine four one as a really positive step forward for making our community a more vibrant and attractive place to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Christopher Shatola-Hart.
Are you able to see me and hear me?
We can hear you, but I don't see you yet. Oh, just speaking. Okay. So yes, you can go ahead.
Okay. Uh, thank you for, for, um, letting me speak tonight. This has been a really interesting evening, so exciting with the natural play area in Memorial Park that we have gone to look at, uh, numerous times and also the important work of the DEI team. And those are teams that, um, certainly will interface with, uh, the Arts Commission. And I am speaking as, uh, a local artist and retired, uh, longtime teacher in the arts in the Westland Wilsonville School District. Um, and I am speaking in support of Resolution two nine four one. I'm excited about the possibilities that we now embrace here. What's been missing, uh, until now has been an official arm of Wilsonville City Government to embrace arts, culture and heritage and partner with the five nonprofit organizations and the art educators in the district who work so hard, uh, to bring beauty and meaning and a deeper sense of community and belonging to Wilsonville. The costs and roadblocks to cultural programming create much more and harder work for people and organizations, and this is burdened budgets and burnt-out volunteers who have tried to make a difference. Uh, the working documents Mark Ottenad shared with us that are under consideration for adoption look good and will get the vital partnership work underway. And I wish to address two major priorities, uh, that I hope will be first tasks of the, of the new commission. Um, one is I do not see a line item in the city's two thousand twenty-two budget for establishing a new paid position and official director or commissioner, or commissioner to head this new commission as was discussed throughout the task force processes I participated in and what I thought the city voted to approve a year ago. I fervently hope that the city can hire a specialist with experience in arts and cultural administration. People in arts and culture speak a different language, operate in different paradigms and customarily present new paradigms as they think outside the box. And having such a professional at the helm as the main liaison and translator between the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission and the city, I think will expedite communication and, and program development. The other thing I really hope to see is a cultural center. Over the summer, I organized summit meetings with representatives from all five of Wilsonville's patrol nonprofit organizations, um, WAC, Charbonneau Arts Association, Boones Ferry Historical Society, Wilsonville Stage and the I-5 Connection. We agreed that having a shared home where we can meet, collaborate, cross-fertilize and conduct all of our programming is paramount, and not having a home has placed undue burdens on our budgets, so our frequency of programming and our volunteers. I think once the city has this in place...
Thank you. Go ahead. We did reach the three minutes. Just, it's, it's, to be fair, we do need to wrap each person up after three minutes.
I was, I was, I was prepared just to stop. I want to, I want to maintain our, um, the three minutes, give everyone a chance to speak. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you very much, Christopher. Okay, and do we have another speaker?
We do. We have Deborah Yorke Zundal.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Hi, so, um, I just want to say, I love Wilsonville. We have lived here a little over thirty years and, and just tonight, sitting here through this meeting, I have to say I know why I love Wilsonville because, well, all the other things that I've sent you on the emails that you're probably getting tired of hearing, but, you know, a few years ago, when it just seemed that there was a lot of hostility towards all kinds of people that weren't just who we thought we should have living in Wilsonville, a group of us started our own little DEI. We called it COPA, Community of Protective Alliance. So if we overheard a, um, mean comment at Starbucks, we'd step up or, and we tried to, you know, get some meetings at the library to think, well, now look, DEI, I listened to Imron and, and speaking tonight, and this is where we've come. I mean, ours just kind of, uh, it's west because volunteer things sometimes don't go, but Wilsonville passed the inclusivity, um, resolution back in the day. Kristen was there and it was just so lovely. Oh, Charlie and we, so this is why we have a great city. We have great leadership and we have amazing people in this town. And I was at the opening with my grandson of the nature play, and believe me, it's a hit. It's so amazing and to listen how they came through the process. The building of the fourth is probably one of the best things there because kids love to pick up sticks and stack them. So on to, oh, I'm Deborah Yorke Zundal, and my address is on the speaker card I submitted. I'm so sorry. Um, and I am here in support of two nine four one. I can tell all of you have about had enough, but I, I'm not even an artist, but I love art because I feel like it not only expresses an individual's experience with life, but when we look back on people that don't even exist anymore, that's what we have left. We have the pyramids of Giza and we have the cave art in, you know, in the south of France. We get to know who, what people are like, and it strengthens the community, it strengthens us as individuals, and the more we can do in Wilsonville and volunteers like Christopher Shatola-Hart and so many have worked so hard, so long, and I just feel with the city's support with this resolution, we won't just be able to do our art intent. We can have a, a place because now, as much as I love Wilsonville, if I want to hear heritage, and I know Wilsonville has heritage, although... And the more we can do in Wilsonville and volunteers like Christopher Chitola-Hart and so many have worked so hard, so long. And I just feel with the city's support with this resolution, we won't just be able to do our art intent. We can have a place. Because now, as much as I love Wilsonville, if I want to hear Heritage Days, and I know Wilsonville has Heritage, although I only came here thirty years ago, but I go to West Lynn Heritage Days. And if I want to go to a gallery, I have to go to Lake Oswego's Lakewood Center. And I think we've got so much going on in this town. And if we can somehow move forward with this resolution, we'll just not only create a stronger identity for Wilsonville, we'll give people a reason to want to come. I mean, we can put Wilsonville on the map with art. There's so many talented people here. So, thank you so much for what you do. I mean, I've seen you sit through this whole meeting. You guys are amazing and we've got so many great people, so I hope that we can get this going.
Thank you, Deborah. Wonderful. And do we have another one, Mr. Cosgrove?
I believe we have one more, Mr. Steve Van Wetchel.
Hello, are you there?
Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you.
Hey, Steve Van Wetchel, you have my speaker card. There's a lot that can be said. I'm going to primarily leave it to my written material already. But I think it's good just to point out that what we're trying to do is really create the heart, basically the beating heart of Wilsonville with the arts, culture and heritage and history, of course. And I think it's very important to advance as much as we can the efforts of creativity and energy and enthusiasm and all of that. But I do have extreme concerns with the format that is being presented on the current resolution in the form of a state commission with a lot of details and stringents and strings attached by state dictates and so forth. I think the city would be much better served by a different format. We need, what we're accomplishing, we need the goals. But I think the format of the commission is going to stifle creativity and energy and enthusiasm all the way around, reducing things to some, well, we all know, the face of government at times and all the red tape that comes along with that and which will be encompassed with a commission type of form. We have a lot of input from the other cities as well. Camby does it and Al Sherwood does it and all this. But I find it very interesting that the city never canvassed the five specific groups that are going to be affected here. And the members of those groups have never really had a voice to put into this setup. Yes, they had a public survey, but twenty-five thousand people and we're excited that a couple hundred people result. I'm not impressed with that. I think all five groups should be able to talk about this individually, come up with, you know, the creativity of the community and come up with some ideas. And then we can collectively come together and decide what type of model, how we want to move forward this. I think the Arts Council, the Arts, Culture and Heritage people, we want to work together. We want to do that, but we don't want to be controlled by the city. Artists are independent free thinkers and I'd like to be able to support them because that's where real creativity and real energy and excitement can come from. And I'm just afraid that the council form that this current resolution is proposing is going to stifle that tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you. And the more, is that, checking if we got everybody?
I think that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. So, that brings us to...
You need some water?
Just a second here.
Because you're going to be reading for a while. Okay, I think we're ready, Mayor.
That brings us to Counselor Comp... Pardon me?
Never mind. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, we're good to go to Counselor Comments, Liaison Reports and Meeting Announcements. And this is a section of the meeting where primarily we are hearing from our counselors, each of whom have been assigned to attend regional and local meetings representing the city on various activities, needs, business and so forth. And we'd like to have them report on those at this time, starting with Council President Oquervall.
Thank you. Yes, this last week, I did listen to the Washington County Coordinating Committee meeting. And Mayor Fitzgerald already mentioned some of the items from that meeting. And I will be planning on attending the next one in January as well. In the next few weeks, there are not as many meetings on, I think probably many of our calendars. And that is because we are entering some holiday time here this month. And of course, there's already many celebrations that have happened earlier this month as well. And so, I just want to wish everyone a lovely holiday and hope that they enjoy a good time with their loved ones and have some special moments this month. So, one thing that I could call out that is kind of on the docket for the next two weeks here now as we're into winter break for a lot of the students in Wilsonville is that our library has started the Take and Make Kips, which have been quite popular in the past. And I think they just started making them available this last Saturday. So, if that's something that you're interested in for an activity over the winter break, probably want to check that out soon. And that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Leehan.
Yes. As you mentioned, I did attend the grand opening of our new nature park and I was very impressed with that. It's not only an excellent play feature. My bachelor's degree is in human development, child development. So, and back when I got that in the seventies, nature play was a big deal. It kind of fell by the wayside in favor of a lot of plastic playgrounds. But it used to be a bigger deal. And so, it's great to see it coming back and being as vibrant as this one is. So, it has a lot of things kids can change and adapt to their play needs at the moment. The other things I've been involved with are the Willamette Falls and Landings. We have had a couple of meetings, a lot about the John Clatt photograph collection called Old Oregon Photos. We were, unfortunately, John Clatt passed away this last month. And so, Willamette Falls and Landings is probably, is in the process of taking over Old Oregon Photos and moving that forward. So, I think there's a lot of possibilities going forward, not just for Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Area Coalition, but also a lot of other historical societies that might participate in that as well. I was also just recently appointed by the governor to the Willamette Falls Locks Authority, which will have its first meeting in January, I believe. And begin the process, kind of transition from the Locks Commission to the Locks Authority as we begin the process of transferring the ownership and operation of the locks from the Army Corps of Engineers to the Locks Authority. So, that should be an exciting time also as we move forward for all the communities upriver. Wilsonville being a main one above the falls to open the upriver to boats that right now are stopped at the falls. So, larger vessels that used to come up and down the upper river. So, look forward to that also. And other than that, just like Counselor Oquervall said, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Have a great holiday season and look out for that Omicron guy. I don't know where he is, but it's, yeah, he's no good.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Rett.
Not much to report. It's been busy with the holiday season like everybody else. I do want to highlight one thing the city has on their website and also their social media. And it also kind of goes perfectly with a lot of what the mayor's been promoting around emergency preparedness. There's a survey available for everybody watching, if any of our speakers are still watching, spread the word in the community. The city's looking for input on your emergency preparedness. I've completed it. I am probably not as prepared as I need to be, if I'm being honest. I'm just going to have like a confessional moment. But it does kind of help me and it'll probably help you too, kind of like go through the process about like how you receive information, the best way for you to maybe look into doing this or maybe contemplate getting prepared for an emergency. And so, I would encourage everybody, you can find it on Twitter, I'm sure, on the city Facebook and then also on the website. So, look into that as we continue to promote emergency preparedness. And then also, I just wanted to say good tidings, blessings, happiness, joy and all the rest to the rest of my colleagues here on the city council, to all the city staff, thank you so much this Christmas season. We thank you so much. And then to all our neighbors and residents in Wilsonville, Merry, Merry, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Counselor Linville.
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to forward my greetings for the season to all of our citizens, to our volunteers with the city and employees and administrators and to my colleagues on the council. I wish you all a very, very restful and happy holiday. I attended the C4 Metro Subcommittee meeting on Wednesday, December the fifteenth. And as I mentioned last, I think it's our last meeting, there is work ahead to revise the regional transportation plan. But the major item that came up at the meeting is that T-PAC, there's all of these acronyms. You know, there's T-PAC, M-PAC. Anyway, the Transportation Planning Group brought up from ODOT and as requested by ODOT, an amendment, an update to the regional transportation plan to include the project surrounding getting tolling up and running. And that recommendation was supposed to go to J-PAC, which we do not have a city representative on J-PAC. Our representative is Counselor Heisey. And she represents the other city seat. And so, she is our representative. But the concerns that many of the members on the Clackamas County Metro Subcommittee had about this amendment was that while ODOT really wanted this to be put into the regional transportation plan, specifically for congruency between the legislation that was passed by our state legislature mandating tolling and the charge to ODOT to implement tolling. And so, this, but the regional transportation plan had nothing in it about the tolling project. And so, the idea was, let's have an amendment that addresses the projects that are involved so that they can begin to get design money, purchase equipment, those kinds of things. But there were a lot of concerns about moving forward with that amendment. And there was no decision made by the C4 Metro Subcommittee about this amendment. It did go to J-PAC, but the concerns were from West Lynn, from Oregon City, from Wilsonville. Particularly that the I-205 tolling project is the pilot project for tolling. And all of the mitigation of the problems that will occur as a result of tolling, specifically with a diversion, traffic diversion, cost. And one of the comments that was brought up was that the people who oftentimes will have to travel along 205 are people who are on the lower socioeconomic scale because they don't have the luxury of working from home. So, they have to get in their cars to drive to work because they're often laborers. They work in, you know, in other, in other jobs which require that they get in roads. So, all of those situations have not been addressed yet. And so, the, there will be more discussion about this. I don't know what J-PAC did with it. They met the following day and I have not heard what happened at J-PAC with the amendment to the regional transportation plan. Frankly, my guess is that it probably passed, given that we don't have representation in our area. And so, with the representatives from Metro, from the City of Portland, from Washington County, we would only have our two representatives with Counselor Heisey and with the representative, Commissioner, our Commissioner from the Clackamas, Savitz from Clackamas County. So, that will be a continuing discussion and I'm sure it will, it's not over yet. And I think Jules Walter, who is the mayor in West Lynn, was really talking about, you know, concerns that she has about citizens that have, they don't have options to get out of West Lynn. They have to go on 205.
Thank you, Counselor. Oh, go ahead.
Can I just have two more? I'm going to attend the next one on the seventeenth of January. But I did want to, I'm going to have a, attend the Willamette Falls Locks Commission on the nineteenth. And I just wanted to congratulate Counselor Leehan on her, the governor's appointment to the Willamette Falls Locks Authority. So, congratulations, Counselor Leehan.
Yes, congratulations. So, Counselors, if I may exercise a request as mayor to maybe add on to my mayor's comments. Related to what Counselor Linville just said, I do have, we were going to have a meeting in Jan, early January and decided that there wasn't a lot of business, so we will not be meeting until the twentieth. There is a letter being prepared by Clackamas County that various mayors in Clackamas County that are being invited to sign it and send it to the Chair of the Joint Transportation Committee Commission, basically expressing many of the things that you all have talked about before I was elected. You know, the concerns about tolling, like, and that we have already expressed in our commitment to the legislature. So, I don't think there's anything new in this letter. It's already been prepared by Clackamas County and some other mayors have some input. The deadline to finish it is going to be January tenth before we meet again. So, I think what I will do is circulate that to you and say, this is what I probably believe would work for us to sign as well. And it's basically saying, these are, these are the problems that need to be addressed if the state is going to do tolling. So, we've done this kind of letter before and it's another letter basically saying many of the same things, going directly to the Oregon Transportation Commission. So, I think I will circulate that to you and hear back from you. It's probably a good way to do that. Thank you. Thank you. There's a lot to talk about with regard to congestion and how we're going to pay for these freeway improvements. The tolling has many different dimensions to it, many different ideas. And there are, the biggest thing about the whole topic is how to pay for some of the new and improved infrastructure that we need. new and improved infrastructure that we need in our freeway system. So you could talk about it for several weeks. That's all we're going to talk about for tonight, probably.
Yeah.
And so I will now move to the consent agenda and ask the Assistant City Attorney to read the item on consent and recognizing that we have moved Resolution 2937 to new business.
Thank you, Mayor. First item on consent agenda is Resolution 2940, a resolution in order amending Resolution 2915 to further extend the local state of emergency and emergency measures as authorized by Resolution 2803. The next item on the consent agenda is Resolution 2943, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville acting in its capacity as a local contract review board authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Invoice Cloud Incorporated. Resolution number 2945, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Murray Smith to provide Phase One preliminary engineering consulting services for the Charbonneau Lift Station Rehabilitation Project, Capital Improvement Project Number 2106, and Resolution 2946, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a goods and services contract with Peterson Power Systems Incorporated for annual generator maintenance, and finally, the minutes of the December 6, 2021 city council meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion to move and seconded, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. That brings us to new business, and we will start with Resolution 2941, if the city attorney would please read it.
Resolution 2941, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville City Council creating the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission.
Thank you. And we've, we've heard a lot about this at this meeting and at the prior meeting. I do note that we have staff member Mark Ottnad, who has led this project for a staff report, at least.
Good evening, Mayor Mark Ottnad, Public and Government Affairs Director. And with me tonight is supposed to be Bill Flood, the Community Cultural Development Consultant. And he will be coming in here in just a moment. Tonight, we will be presenting on Resolution Number 2941, from which you've heard a number of citizens already provide testimony during citizen input. The Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission is born out of the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy that the city council approved in November of 2020 with Resolution Number 2857. This was a two-year-long community engagement effort that eventually produced both the strategy and the recommendation for the commission. There was an extensive public engagement process that included a very large 42-member task force. The task force divided into various committees to study different parts of arts, culture, and heritage in the Wilsonville area. We also conducted quite a few public meetings, meetings of the task force, meetings with different audiences in the community, youth, Latinx family members, and a larger community meeting that was held earlier. We also conducted extensive online public survey and comment periods, both with the community as a whole, as well as with the task force. And again, later this year, as we began to develop the final recommendations for the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission. We conducted extensive stakeholder interviews. Over 50, over 50 interviews were conducted, including all of the leading arts, culture, and heritage organizational representatives in Wilsonville, and even those outside of Wilsonville, such as Wilsonville Stage and others, who oftentimes operate our community nonprofits. Bill Flood also conducted interviews with operators of municipal cultural facilities and programs, conducting 20 interviews with, for 15 communities, both in 2020 and again in 2021, in going into more detail. Now, Bill will cover the next part pertaining to the strategy.
Here, just a minute, let me get organized. Thank you. So I'm just going to quickly review the findings and recommendations in the strategy It was very clear from our research and extensive project that Wilsonville lacks a clear community core, community center, and a collective cultural identity. That, that came out loud and clear from all of our ways of engagement. All the demographic changes underways shape the future of the community. Changes examples, meaning an aging donor base within the nonprofit, and then need to engage more younger people, as well as a growing Latinx population. The next finding is, oh, Mark, there you are with your, great. Great, great. There was also clear, all from the community, from our different sectors, for the city to step forward and lead by adopting this cultural strategy and to provide more coordination among the local arts and cultural heritage facilities, programs, and events. It was also loud and clear that cultural diversity and ethnic inclusion should be a priority. And I also echo that it's perfect to be moving your DEI committee forward in the same time that you're moving forward support for local culture. To me, it's basically the same, same movement there of making Wilsonville an even better It was also very clear that the Wilsonville culture, first of all, healthy arts ecology in a community also depends on healthy cultural nonprofits. And the cultural nonprofits have experienced a lot of stress related to some decline in revenues, many an aging donor base, and so forth and so on. And then the pandemic has only made this condition worse around Oregon. But I will say, I'm also pretty impressed with how the, your local nonprofits are surviving through all of this. And they've been doing this without significant city support. So the recommendation is to provide strategic assistance to Wilsonville's cultural nonprofits in order to build their organizational capacity. As one of the speakers said, I'm also echoing, I'm not sure if it's in this resolution or coming down the line, a staff person that will systematically figure out a system for working with and supporting the cultural nonprofits. I've got to add that the meeting that Mark and I had with the cultural nonprofits has been referenced. A real high point in the meeting to me was, there was this energy that came in the group when they reminisced and remembered about a time when the city had a point person that they could go to. And they haven't had that for some time. And obviously, the city has lacked a comprehensive plan for supporting arts, culture, and heritage facilities, programs, and events. It was interesting, there was also a call for, so again, it gets back to the call for city leadership, not the city doing everything, but providing the leadership. And also, see, and the schools, and the community college, and other men, units of local government also coordinating around support for cultural activities and programs. So as I just said, the city forming an Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission and providing, supporting staffing resource is just the obvious, to me, to me, it's the only way to really move forward in the way that so many folks are going for, including majority of your cultural nonprofits. The other thing I'll also add, in, in the last few months, I've also gone back, I think you know this, to many of our, the 15 local communities that we've been studying and studying and studying. And again, we're basing that, the model that's been put forward to you on what's working in other communities. Public art is also recognized as a significant cultural asset in Wilsonville. That was another key finding that's coming up. People appreciate public art. The other thing is substantial community demand exists for an arts and culture center slash facility, which goes right along with this sense of developing a stronger community core and stronger sense of cultural identity. So recommendation here is to develop a long-term, sustainable public art program, as opposed to kind of one-shot public art pieces here and there, but a real plan and program. And that the city also works with partners to advance an arts and culture center or facility, or I would add, facilities. As I mentioned, funding and resource development are crucial to improving nonprofit organizational capacity and advancing local culture. So creating sustainable funding mechanisms are key here.
And this leads us to the formation of the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission, abbreviated as ACHC, which is a primary recommendation of the strategy. The duties of the commission would include overseeing the implementation of the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy. And this would include working to produce for council approval an annual fiscal plan for a five-year plan for how do we plan to get to the, implement the strategy. But what are we going to do over the next year that implements the strategy? What specific task and goals will we accomplish? The duties of the commission, it makes recommendations to the city council and other city boards and staff concerning, and these are all items that are from the strategy that Bill Flood just shared with us, public sector leadership and coordination to improve intergovernmental collaboration, to work with partners to advance an arts and cultural center, develop a long-term, sustainable public arts program, to make cultural diversity, ethnic inclusivity, and accessibility for all community members a priority, and to provide strategic assistance with Wilsonville cultural nonprofits in order to build their organizational capacity. So these are all recommendations that came from the strategy that are now baked into the duties of the commission. And the commission makes recommendations to the city council, considering the goals and disbursement of funds of what's now the former Community Tourism Matching Grant Program to a renamed Community Cultural Events and Matching Grant Program. The commission would be composed of 13 members, nine voting members, of whom at least five are Wilsonville residents, and four ex official or non-voting advisory members, including the city councilor, Parks and Recreation Director are designated, the city manager are designated, and the library director are designated. And these three departments were chosen because they are the ones that are most involved in arts, culture, and heritage-related activities. The terms of appointment for commissioners would be three-year terms that are initially staggered, with members having different tenures initially, so that the commission does not term over all at once. There would be a three-term, term limit where a member would have to step down for a year before we could be reappointed. For forming the commission, we plan to conduct recruitment and advertising of the openings during January of 2022, February and March to conduct interviews of applicants. During March to April would be the appointment of the commission, and we would seek to have the first meeting of the commission in April or May of 2022. And the initial order of business is to prioritize the recommendations for council review, the strategy recommendations, so that we can start focusing on the most important items first. That's the summary of the staff report for Resolution Number 2941 that creates the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ottnad and Mr. Flood. Very much appreciate your comments. We've spent a good amount of time talking about this today at a prior meeting, and I would like to ask very briefly if anyone on the council has a clarifying question for the staff before I ask for a motion. Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2941?
I have a, I have a common question.
Excuse me, I didn't see that.
Thank you. I guess they, it's a little bit of a side note as we listen to the presentation. I think overall, I'm really happy with what you guys came up with. One thing, though, that's got me kind of concerned, and maybe as a city going forward, we might consider doing this a little bit differently, is, and it was in this presentation, is I'm kind of done hearing the term Latinx, and I want to tell you why. It was a term that was really...
Counselor, Counselor West, this is the time to ask a clarifying question of the staff.
And I'm making, yeah, I'm making a comment about the presentation. Yeah.
But that could be done after the vote. I mean, when, when...
I could do it, I could do it now, or I could do it now, or in discussion.
I think it fits better in discussion.
Okay, then I'll, I'll get my comments for discussion.
Happy to hear it, happy to hear it. I just wanted to get for clarifying questions for staff, and then we'll go to that. Okay, so do I have a motion for Resolution 2941? Counselor Linville.
Your Honor, I was, I was pleased to be on a task force, and I wanted to just demonstrate my support for where we're going with this commission, and so I move to adopt Resolution Number 2941.
Second. And I have a second from Counselor Linville. Is there any, I mean, Counselor Lee Han, I'm getting a little punchy. I got the L. Excuse me. Second by Counselor Linville, second by Counselor Lee Han, and I recognize Counselor, now, now we'll move to discussion, and I will recognize Counselor West.
Okay, so just a comment on the presentation, what was in our packet. I'm just, I want us to maybe consider using the traditional terms for the Hispanic community. Latinx is created by, it's through the English language process here, it's supposed to be gender neutral for LGBTQ inclusive term to refer to Hispanics. However, there's a lot of polls coming out, and a lot of evidence coming out that the Hispanic community doesn't like it, and they're starting to push back against it. Hispanic community doesn't like it, and they're starting to push back against it, and if we want to be inclusive in our arts, and in all of our diversity, equity, and inclusion stuff that just come up tonight, I think we need to use their terms, which is Latino, Latina. And I think some of the polls even show that as many as 40% of them are offended by that term. And so something we might want to consider is making sure that we're referring to those people how they would prefer culturally referred to. I don't have a right to tell them how they want to be culturally referred to, or to define their culture, and so I hope that as we go forward in our future presentations, that we actually use their cultural terms.
Any other comments? Council President Ocarval.
Thank you. Um, oh, here's my hand up and hand down. Okay, I just wanted to comment, you know, this is a point to reflect on the decision that is at hand, which is the creation of the commission. And it's interesting, you know, this work, the task force, there is much that has led up to it. It's interesting to think that a lot of this work with the task force, too, was done kind of during the early onset of the pandemic, and, you know, this was a time period that really shook us, I think, you know, as we are thinking, what is the future? Because we were in a situation of a lot of new situations, new experiences, or a new environment, and it was quite clear from the many discussions and interviews, as was outlined tonight, that our city wants to have this as part of Wilsonville's future. And we've heard even in some of the comments tonight during community input, we heard from a number of members of the different groups, multiple groups within nonprofits within Wilsonville, supporting this action. And the idea of having a commission that would help coordinate efforts, and give support, and, you know, really bring to the forefront a lot of the work that already exists within the city, but help in aiding with some of that coordination and support that's needed. So, I am supportive of the idea of, you know, progressing forward in this vision that I feel our community has already expressed is important for the city's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lehan.
Uh, yes, I, I know that it's not that Wilsonville has not been involved in, in these efforts in the past. I mean, certainly, Beauty and the Bridge, it was an enormous project that involved all kinds of government entities, and from ODOT, the school district, to the city. But it has been kind of hit or miss, and then we don't have an oversight, even for a project of that scale, we don't have an oversight to carry it forward. No, no one's really looking out for what to, you know, how best to move that through time. And so there's, there's always going to be a lot to do in this area. As several people mentioned, it would be nice to have a, some staff support that was dedicated to this effort, and facilities, a facility or facilities that would give us an anchor, a place to be, especially for the performing arts and, and the visual arts, similar to what other communities have around us. So, I, but I think this is, this is where we start with this commission. It will have some very talented people on it, I am confident, and, and this is, this is how we pull it together. So, I'm very excited about moving forward with this.
I would confirm that, that I think we've just heard some, some comments tonight that reflect the passion for the community to do what it takes in a purposeful, sustained, and realistic basis to, to allow the, the culture and heritage of Wilsonville in the past, and also, all of this artistic energy and capability and basically awesomeness that we see in our schools and our young people, and let that bloom and blossom and take root. And so when people say, oh, Wilsonville, it has I-5 going through it, and it's right on the Willamette River, and then they will know a lot of other follow-up sentences about Wilsonville, because it will be more readily reflected in what you see and do when you live, work, and play in Wilsonville. So it's not going to happen overnight, and this means we're going to take up the charge and get going with it, so I'm in favor of it. We've had our discussion. If, are there any other comments from the councilors before we ask for a vote? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. That brings us to the item we added to new business, which is Resolution 2937. If that could please be read by the Assistant City Attorney.
Resolution Number 2937, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a contractor's contract with Two KG Contractors Incorporated to construct the City Hall renovation project.
And I will note for the record, Mayor, that you've already received a presentation on this, so myself and Mr. Montalvo will be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Out of respect for everyone's time and the fact that we did have a long presentation on this earlier, I will acknowledge that, and we will not ask for another presentation at this time. There's a packet on, description of this in the packet. And do I have a motion for Resolution 2937? Council President Ocarval.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2937.
Do I have a second? Our motion's been moved and seconded by, moved by Council President Ocarval, seconded by Counselor Lehan, and at this point, do we have council discussion? Counselor West.
Um, I guess one, my question that I maybe have is, and Martin, I know you put a lot of work into this, I just, I got a little sticker shock.
Understandable.
So, I, is there a, is there like, and as I thought about it as we moved before, we've had a little bit of time since the work session, is there a way with the amount that we had already approved as a council, to see a version of that that still works, that's maybe an improvement? But is there things that can still, like, because as a council, we already said, hey, yeah, it's already tore up, so let's look for that opportunity to utilize that, to improve it as necessary, and we provided some funds for that. This is just so much more, and so I didn't know if there was a reasonable way to find that happy value medium.
So, as we go into construction, there are a few opportunities to try and value-engineer a few things, but to try and bring something back to the scale of what we had originally anticipated would be a complete redesign, which would require us to, you know, issue a secondary design component to the contract, which would cost more money. We'd have to throw out the bids that we have, repost those, and then solicit new bids for an alternative design. We've been pretty prudent with the requi, you know, what, we had several meetings with staff, several meetings with the managers for those staff, you know, try to get their input, say, what are the critical efficiencies, and the things that you feel you need to be safe, both as a physical security and for health security. And I understand, you know, we were all a bit sticker shocked when the bids came in, and it was even more disappointing when we had to throw out the low bid. But outside of some minor value engineering items to save a few dollars, it would require a complete redesign, unfortunately. That's the best answer I can provide for you right now.
Can I just tell you, I'm going to tell the council where I'm going to go. Because of the sticker shock change, I know I may be alone, but I'm going to vote no. And the reason, and I just wanted to like, and the reason why is, is that I think that because the sticker shock's so great, I'd rather us go back to kind of like, what the insurance primarily cover, and then just get the job done, because most people were happy with that before the flood anyways. So, that's going to be my decision tonight, I respect all of you guys' vote, but I just want to explain mine.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up, but I will look, no, I do see Council President Ocarval.
Sure, I just wanted to, I hear what Counselor West is saying, and this is, you know, it's, I think we all wish that it wouldn't be this much money, right? I'm seeing nodding heads there in council chambers. I heard in the presentation that the countertop itself may have needed to be replaced in a few years, if we hadn't had the ice machine issue. So, it's unfortunate, but here we are, and so maybe this has, you know, forced the, the project to be addressed now instead of in a few years. However, I guess because we are forced to address it now, it is because of the accident with the ice machine, and so CIS will reimburse us for $138,000, I think it was $249 or some, somewhere in that ballpark.
Minus our deductible.
Right, minus our deductible, which I believe was $5,000, if I'm remembering that correctly. Okay. So we do have that reimbursement. We are also looking at making this space something that is safer, has more security, and offers better inclusion for all of our community members. And I see that as having value as well. So while this is, you know, a project that costs money, and it's expensive, and we all wish it wasn't as expensive as it is, I see that those things are important, are important to our community members. We've heard presentations earlier tonight that outline how inclusion is important within our city, and I want to look for ways to do that, as well as bringing safety for our staff that is working in the building all the time. So, a change needed to be made, that happened a little bit earlier because of the ice machine. We have the reimbursement, you know, I mean, we can try and look for some silver lining in here, but I see this as a positive improvement for the city.
Thank you. Counselor Lehan.
Uh, yes, just real briefly, I would say, this is proceeding and making the, the best change that we can for efficiency and all of the things that Counselor Ocarval just described. That's the most efficient use of funds going forward. If you have this situation happen, and you decide, well, let's just go back and put it the way it was 20 years ago, when you know 20 years ago was inadequate for the demands of today, that's, that's just, just really inefficient use of your resources, because this is an opportunity to take a fresh look at it and make it good for the next 20 years or 30 years or whatever, rather than let's go back and try to put it back together the way it was when it, when we knew that wasn't quite adequate at the time. So, so this is, I view this as the most efficient use of our resources.
Thank you. Counselor Lindell.
Thank you. I, I agree with Counselor Lehan's comments, and I just wanted to clarify, in my supportive Council President Ocarval's comments, one of the items that I think is really important is that, is that we are making the downstairs space, which is public space, ADA, you know, meeting the ADA requirements for our, our public to be able to do business at the city. And that's important to me. And so, I also think this is an opportunity, if we were to do any of this remodeling five years down the road, we would not have the benefit of having the insurance money that we're getting from the, from the accident. So, I think if our city was in a fiscal situation where we could not afford it, then I think it would be a different situation, but this mitigates the amount of money that we would have to spend to upgrade and, and make the space ADA compliant, as well as, as the appearance. And I don't think this is an outrageous design, I don't think it's materials that are putting us kind of way out there. So, I mean, it's going to have to be repaired anyway, so that, those are my comments.
Thank you, Counselor Lindell. I think everyone has made some really good comments, I appreciate the sentiment to be fiscally prudent, and I feel like this situation, it's been said quite a few times by people tonight, that yes, we certainly wish we didn't have that accident with the ice maker. We also have some really serious things to think about that we have learned through some difficult times in the last several years, and that is the safety that is necessary in a public place, like the lobby of the City Hall for the City of Wilsonville, which is now 27,000 people, right off of I-5, and it's a city that is, that is going places, and people have high expectations for it. These drop-down, roll-down doors that we will have will allow full use of that lobby for evening meetings, we do a lot of activities in our city hall. It gives a lot of confidence to just continuing in that mode, so we can safely secure that side of the building when, when the staff are not there. It also changes the welcoming nature of the building tremendously. So when you walk in the door, instead of having to peer around and see who's behind the glass, and having them do the same, now you'll be able to, as a person working there, you can see this coming in, and as a person who's entering, maybe you're a small business person, maybe you're considering building some houses, or a new, a new restaurant, you have plans, there's a place to stand there with the planning staff, with the permitting staff, building inspectors, and together, if you're part of the team who designed what you want to do and find out how you can do it. If you are in a wheelchair, there's going to be a place right there in the center where the person who isn't in the wheelchair is, or if you want to sit to do the business, it's not around the corner, it's right there welcoming in the same way that others are welcomed. So I think it does a lot for us, and it also solves the problem of the pillars that we discussed before that had been addressed previously and wasn't, wasn't taken care of. So we're able to take care of a number of things, and I think it's wonderful how it does happen to give us even more opportunity to be welcoming, inclusive, and, and moving forward with people who want to do business with the City of Wilsonville, and who live here and are part of it. So, thank you. With that, I will call for the vote. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Any abstain? Motion passes 4 to 1. Thank you for that really good discussion among all of the councilors. That brings us to continuing business, and we have second reading for Ordinance 853, if the Assistant City Manager will please read it.
This is the second reading for Ordinance Number 853, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville approving a zone map amendment from the residential agricultural holding zone renamed by Ordinance Number 851 to future development agricultural holding effective November 18th, 2021, to the planned development, planned development residential four zone on approximately 2.39 acres, comprising tax lot 5500, Section 13AA, Township 3 South, Range 1 West, Willamette Meridian, Clackamas County, Oregon, Meridian United Church of Christ is the applicant owner.
Thank you. I call to order a public hearing regarding proposed ordinance eight five three on second reading. Although city council meetings are open to the public, this meeting may also be attended remotely in accordance with Oregon law. Information regarding how the public can attend this meeting remotely is posted at city hall and on the city's website. Public testimony was closed after the first reading. I ask once again, do any members of the city council wish to abstain, declare conflict of interest, or report on any ex parte contact or any information you gained outside of the hearing? Counsel President Okravol.
I will be abstaining from this vote, um, simply because I was not here for the first reading.
Thank you. At this time, does staff have any follow-up information to present, or do any members of the city council have any questions for staff?
Uh, good evening, Mayor and counselors. I'm Cindy Lookfley, Associate Planner with the city, and I just wanted to note that we, um, since the first reading, we have not received any public comment or questions, um, about the zone map amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Lookfley. Um, hearing no other questions, may I have a motion to close this public hearing? Counselor Lindell.
I'm not sure if this is right, but I move to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Do I? Thank you. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 I declare the public hearing closed. Closed on second reading. I'm going to ask the, um, parliamentarians, um, our Assistant City Attorney, because of the procedure with this type of hearing, if we have, um, I think we've covered everything and we're now ready for a vote on ordinance eight five three, correct?
Second reading, yes.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor, on, on second reading.
Thank you. So hearing, so, so I'm going to ask the council once again, just to be sure, any further discussion about this ordinance eight five three?
Uh, yes, only, um, did, did I miss the part, or did we already ask? Did they, uh, did we have any other input?
We did ask.
Okay, perfect, then. Nothing else?
Thank you for double checking. This is an especially fun procedure to read. It sounds like I'm saying the same thing over and over, so thank you for bearing with me. So, um, hearing no further discussion, I call for a vote on ordinance eight five three on second reading.
Your Honor, do we make a motion?
I think we have to make a motion.
Do you want me to make, I can make one.
May I have a, a motion to vote on eight five three? Ordinance eight five three on second reading, please.
Your Honor.
Adopt.
Yeah, whoever, okay, um, Your Honor, I move to adopt ordinance number eight five three on second reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You said move in second, and all in favor of ordinance eight five three on second reading, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, but I think the voice falls.
Oh, that's true.
Second reading, you need to ask the recorder, need a roll call.
Okay, thank you. That's missing from my, um, script here, but I will ask for a roll call vote. I will ask the city recorder to ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor West?
Yes.
Counsel President Okravol?
Aye.
Counselor Lehan?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Yes. Ordinance number eight five three is approved on second reading. If you desire to appeal this decision to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, you must make applications stating the grounds of the appeal in the form and within the time prescribed by state law. So before we leave that, um, Mr. Adams, have we covered all of the details?
We, we've covered it thoroughly, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us to a public hearing for resolution two nine four two. If the Assistant City Attorney would please read the resolution.
Resolution number two nine four two, a resolution authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, and I think we have a staff report from Mr. Katko.
Yeah, just, uh, the staff report is essentially what is in your council packet and which was posted online, so it's for, it's a supplemental budget for your consideration for eight items. Um, the first four on that metric either directly or indirectly affect the general, the general fund, and that would be, um, seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars for a contracted behavioral health position, which would be covered by our ARPA grant funds, um, and that is subject to further council approval on the actual contract when that comes up, uh, in the next few months. Uh, it's for seventy-five thousand for council goal six, which is to engage the community in support of emergency preparation and resiliency, and then of course, it's, um, two hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars for the, uh, city hall renovation, and another twenty-five thousand for, uh, the facility's master plan to complete. And the additional, um, budget supplementals are for essentially equipment in capital items related to the water or the sewer capital funds, uh, and they are outlined in the staff report as well.
Thank you. And as Mr. Katko mentioned, we were provided all of this detail with, um, descriptions and the, um, financial amounts in our packet, and, um, so I will call to order.
Your Honor.
Yes?
So can we pull out the portion that I'm not voting? Is this the same thing? No, this is not the same thing. Uh, oh yeah, the, the additional funds for the, um, is that in here?
Yes. Yeah, it's the third line item.
Yeah, I see it. Sorry, it's so small. I mean, I, I, I will vote for everything else except for that, but I didn't know if we needed to pull that out, or I could just not vote for any of it, but some of, most of the, I approve of with most likely the rest of you, but my vote has developed since our discussion.
So, so this could be a, um, you know, this is a, uh, we are discussing this, and you have a chance to vote on it, yes or no. I don't, we're not going to pull that particular item out and vote in it, on it in another way.
We don't have a procedural way to do that, because it's, it's one, it's, it's one ordinance, or one resolution.
Okay, thanks.
One further thing on the resolution, there's just a small script, there's a date error actually on the resolution. It says November twentieth, um, for adoption. It's actually meant to say December twentieth. Other than that, that's all we have.
Did everyone, um, yes, it should have said December twentieth. So Counselor West, um, are you, um, do you have the information you need?
Yeah, I'll bring the rest up into discussion.
Okay, um, so I call to order the Wilsonville City Council public hearing on resolution two nine four two, as has been read. Ladies and gentlemen, the city council will be taking public testimony tonight during the public hearing. The hearing will be conducted in the following manner. Staff will present a report, as you just heard. Testimony by proponents, opponents, and those either in favor nor against the proposed resolution. Although city council meetings are open to the public, this meeting may be attended remotely in accordance with Oregon law. Information regarding how the public can attend this meeting remotely and give testimony is posted at city hall and on the city website. Notice was given that testimony could be submitted for the record in advance in writing by emailing it or mailing it to the city recorder. Testimony may be submitted in writing at any time prior to the closure of the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no further testimony in any form will be accepted. If you want to participate in this meeting remotely when the time for public testimony is called, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press star nine on your telephone. If you would like to testify, or if you would like to notify the city recorder you wish to submit written testimony. If you are having difficulties with these instructions, you may call the number on the screen, one six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three, and when prompted, enter webinar ID number eight one five three six zero five six four six eight. Those numbers are shown on the screen. When called upon to testify, state your full name and address for the record, or state that you already have given that to the city recorder. I request from those providing testimony not to repeat testimony that has already been given to the city council, simply indicating that you agree with the prior testimony that has been given to the city council. Excuse me, simply indicating that you agree with the prior testimony given by a speaker you identify as sufficient. If you wish to submit written testimony when called upon, email your testimony to the city recorder who will provide copies to the council. And the staff has presented their report. Does any member of the city council have any questions for the staff? If we covered that. Hearing no more questions for staff, I will call for public testimony. Remember to state your name and address for the record and whether your testimony is in support, against, or neutral. When testimony is concluded, excuse me, do any members of the council have any further questions for staff or any other party who testified before this public hearing is closed? Hearing no further questions.
So, so Your Honor, your, excuse me, Your Honor, so there, there was no public testimony?
It turns out that that's correct. We don't, we don't have anybody wishing to speak.
Okay, Counselor West.
Just a quick question on procedural stuff, again, just so I have a better understanding of it.
Sure.
Um, if, if everybody would have joined me and voted to not support the renovation in city hall or to go back to the drawing board and do something different, what would have happened with this vote here? Would we have, would we have, would have had to not, like, scrap this whole thing that we're doing now? Or how, like, what, because anybody could have called it up and put it in a new business? So I'm just curious, like, how that works, if it was to go the other direction.
If I could try to answer that and see how it sounds to the city manager and city attorney. Right now, I mean, first of all, we voted earlier to approve the council chambers renovation, or the, the city hall. So that has been approved. Now, right, right now, we are approving the financial mechanism to do that. And so what I'm understanding you saying is you, you, um, you know, you're probably in favor of all the other ones except that, but, but yet.
If, if the majority of the council would have joined me and there was a different vote, there would have had been a mechanism to either scrap this or to change it.
But that's not where, but that's not where we are. We don't, we don't need to do that.
Well, if there is, uh, but my thing is, if there is a mechanism, I'd like to know if it could be considered so I could, um, join the rest of you in supporting all these other things that are.
I can, I can answer. Mayor, I can answer the hypothetical, which I believe he's asking is, had council decided not to move forward with the council chamber renovation, then at this point in time, we would have asked you to strip that out of the supplemental budget, so we would have amended the supplemental budget to strike, strike that out, and that would have reduced the bottom line supplemental budget by that amount. But you are correct, Mayor, that since you've already approved that, um, there's no way to go back and get a second bite at the apple. So, um, Counselor West has already noted his objections for the record by voting against that, so he could certainly vote against the supplemental budget if he so chooses, that's his choice. Um, but the resolution as it's presented to you tonight is not going to change unless you've all changed your mind on that, um, renovation resolution you've already approved.
I see the clarification.
And, you know, in order to do that, we have to do a supplemental budget amendment. I guess we, we don't really have the capacity to break out and start an entirely new resolution.
That, that's correct, Mayor Ryan Adams here. So one of the issues is this requires public notice, and so we've, we've noticed this to the public, and because this is a single ordinance, if we were going to break it down and strip it down further, it would require another public notice to the extent that we're talking about, so I don't think that this is possible.
Answered, satisfied. Thank you.
I think Counselor West, if you want to read, part of the purpose of having this discussion is for the record, I mean, you've kind of said this, maybe you want to say it again, that you're in favor of all these other items, but because of the way this is, you're voting now.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm clear, it's how the process works, it's clear to me now, I appreciate that, so I'm ready to move forward.
So hearing no further questions, and everyone having testified, I hereby declare this public hearing closed. Do I have a motion on resolution two nine four two? Counsel President Okravol.
I move to approve resolution two nine four two with the, um, the, the air corrected in the final line of the resolution to December twentieth.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that motion as stated? The motion has been.
I'll second, I'll second.
Moved by Counsel President Okravol, seconded by Counselor Lindell. Is there any further discussion? Counsel, Counselor West?
Thank you, everyone. So as we look through this list here, even though there is one item here, we all know that I am not supporting, and we've already covered that, so I'm not going to rehash that. Um, I do think there are other things in this that I think are more important. Um, they may not even be the same dollar figure, but value-wise, principle-wise, for me, they're more important than my position on the city hall renovation. Um, there's an important piece of funding here for mental health and emergency services. Um, there's other important stuff for the water treatment plant. So when I look at this in its totality, I think that, um, I, there's a lot of important things that we're taking care of here, making sure they're funded, uh, and so, um, I hope, and I urge the rest of the council to join me in supporting this.
Is there any other discussion? You're proving that it makes sense to keep asking people if they have discussion. So hearing no further discussion or commentary, I hereby call the question on the motion as made and seconded. Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 So opposed? The motion passes five to zero. That brings us to city manager's business.
I'll just wish you all happy holidays and a safe and happy new year, and thank you for all the good work that you do in the community. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Any lethal business?
I will repeat the same message that City Manager Cosgrove said.
Thank you. Um, I'm, I'm going to shortly adjourn the meeting, and then if you're all, um, before I do, I want to ask if, um, the people who form the Urban Renewal Agency are fine continuing right into that meeting without a break. The city council meeting is hereby adjourned at nine forty-four P.M. I call to order the Urban Renewal Agency meeting on December twentieth, two thousand twenty-one for the city of Wilsonville. We will start with citizen input. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the Urban Renewal Agency on items not on the agenda. It is also the time to address items that are on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff and the Urban Renewal Agency members will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizens' input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We'll start with a consent agenda. Will the, um, agency attorney please read the minutes?
The consent agenda.
Your Honor, excuse me, do we need to do a roll call?
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, I, um, yes, I don't know why that is missing from my notes here. Yes, I don't know why that is missing from my notes here. So, let me start with a roll call. Thank you, Counselor Linville. Will the agency recorder please call the roll?
Member Linville? Member West?
Here.
Member Ocravol? Member Lehan?
Here.
Chair Fitzgerald?
So, I will now go... Open the citizen input point. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the Urban Renewal Agency on items not on the agenda. It is also the time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff and the Urban Renewal Agency will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizens' input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Use the raise hand feature in Zoom to let us know you would like to provide comments. Do we have anyone wishing to provide testimony?
We do not, Mayor.
Will the agency attorney please read the consent agenda?
The consent agenda this evening consists of the minutes of the November 1st, 2021, Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Um, Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Thank you, Member Lehan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Member West. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. That brings us to the public hearing, and for Urban Renewal Associate Agency Resolution Number 323, will the city agency attorney please read the resolution?
Urban Renewal Agency Resolution Number 323, a resolution authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 2021 to 2022.
I call to order the Wiltonville Urban Renewal Agency public hearing on Urban Renewal Agency Resolution Number 323, as has been read. Ladies and gentlemen, the agency will be taking public testimony tonight during the public hearing. The hearing will be conducted in the following manner. City staff will present a report, testimony by proponents, opponents, and those neither in favor nor against the proposed resolution. Although Urban Renewal Agency meetings are open to the public, this meeting may also be attended remotely in accordance with Oregon law. Information regarding how the public can attend this meeting remotely and give testimony is posted at City Hall and on the city's website. Notice was given that testimony could be submitted for the record and in advance in writing by emailing it or mailing it to the city recorder. Testimony may be submitted in writing at the time prior to closure of the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no further testimony in any form will be accepted. If you wish to participate in this meeting remotely, when the time for public testimony is called, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press *9 on your telephone if you would like to testify, or if you would like to notify the city recorder you wish to submit written testimony. If you're having difficulties with these instructions, you may call 1-669-900-6833, and, when prompted, enter webinar ID number 815-3605-6468. Both numbers are shown on the screen. When called upon to testify, state your full name and address for the record, or state that you have already provided that to the recorder. I request from those providing testimony not to repeat testimony that has already been given to the agency, simply indicating that you agree with the prior testimony given by a speaker you identify as sufficient. If you wish to submit written testimony when called upon, email your testimony to the city recorder, who will provide copies to the agency. Staff, please present your report.
Hello, this is Keith Catco here, again, City's Finance Director. This is just for one item. This is to account for the costs of the Kiva Art Tech building that were essentially previously covered by the Westland-Wilsonville School District lease of the building. The lease is over, so we have to now incur those costs, most of which are related to the utility, water, sewer, electric costs of the building, as well as to do some small fixes, the parking lot fixes, and a slurry seal of the parking lot. So, it's $29,200 to the Program Income Fund for the Year 2000 Fund with the offset to contingency. One other small fix on the resolution as well. There was an erroneous attachment to the resolution. You can disregard that attachment in the council packet. The only supplemental is for the $29,200, which is to materials and services with an offset to contingency in the Year 2000 Urban Renewal Program Income Fund. And that's it.
Sorry, are you referring to attachment A?
Of the resolution, yeah. That resolution that was in the council packet is the wrong... Was the wrong resolution. Was the wrong attachment. The attachment should have just been $29,200 to materials and services in the offset to contingency in the Year 2000 Urban Renewal Program Income Fund. And just for, as I stated, just for the utility costs and some small maintenance costs for the Kiva Art Tech building, which was previously funded through a lease with the school district that is no longer. So, those costs come back to the city or the Urban Renewal Agency.
Does any member of the agency have any questions for staff? Counselor Linville?
Member Linville, um... My only question is, are these going to cover all the costs through the end of the fiscal year? Is that what the plan is?
Yeah, they'll cover the costs of the electricity and the water in the sewer through the end of the year, and then, at some point, we'll move that building, at least accounting-wise, probably to the city from the Urban Renewal Agency, because at some point, the trajectory is to close down that urban renewal district. So, that's one of the few remaining properties in that urban renewal district. So, with the loss of the lease, we're no longer leasing out that building. It'll just become a city property, and the future costs will be absorbed in the city budget, not the urban renewal budget, for next year.
Okay, thank you. So, hearing no more questions for staff, I will call for public testimony. Remember to state your name and address for the record, and whether your testimony is in support, against, or neutral. Do we have any people wanting to testify?
We do not, Mayor.
Do any members of this agency have any further questions for staff before this public hearing is closed? Hearing no further questions, and everyone having testified, I hereby declare that this public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion on resolution 323?
Fixed it.
Counsel... Member Ocravol?
I move to approve URA Resolution 323.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And that's with the...
Member Lehan.
That's with the comments of the Finance Director for the agency as well, correct? On the attachment?
Yes.
Correct, with the attachment A scratched, yeah.
Yes.
Does the maker of second agrees?
Yes.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion or remarks by any agency member before I call the vote? Hearing no further discussion or commentary, I hereby call the question on the motion as made and seconded. Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries five to zero. I hereby adjourn the Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Merry Christmas!
Merry Christmas!
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas, everyone!
Goodbye.